Go ahead and lock the doors. All right, thank you everyone for being here tonight and welcome to the May 23, 2022, meeting of the Homewood City Council. We're going to start tonight with a couple of proclamations. I believe Mayor, you're going first.
I think most everybody's here for Steve Lloyd, is that correct? If I could have Mr. Lloyd please come up here and join me. That would be great. So I'll read this proclamation again. I will be facing that way, so I apologize to you and the bald head. Whereas Steve Lloyd has held a Boy Scout leadership role at Trinity United Methodist Church's Cub Scout Pack 397 and Boy Scout Troop 97 for 22 years, and whereas Steve Lloyd has been Scout Master for 14 years at Troop 97, making him the longest tenured Scout Master of all 15 Scout Masters at the troop since it was established in 1950, and whereas under Steve Lloyd's Scout Master leadership, over 110 Boy Scouts have earned the esteemed Eagle Scout rank since 2008, and whereas Steve Lloyd always placed major emphasis on the development of each and every Scout, encouraging each to become his best self and believing that every Scout has the ability to succeed with proper leadership, and whereas Steve Lloyd has participated in hundreds of camping trips, has been a role model for a generation of Scouts, and has helped grow and sustain PAC 397 and Troop 97 over the years, and whereas Steve and his wife Marilyn have lived in Homewood for nearly 30 years, have been devoted members of Dawson Memorial Baptist Church for decades, and have gladly and eagerly given of their time and talents over the years to make their community better, and whereas the Scouts of, excuse me, Scouts of Cub Scout PAC 397 and Boy Scout Troop 97 and their friends and families do sincerely appreciate the time, wisdom, and guidance Steve Lloyd has faithfully shared, now therefore I, Patrick McCluskey, Mayor of the City of Homewood, Alabama, recognize and applaud Steve Lloyd's decades of steadfast commitment and dedicated service to all of his Scouts and their families as well as his community. And I believe there's one more for Steve, so he can stay right there.
Yeah. My name's, my name's Justin Berkley. I'm with the Office of Governor Kay Ivey and have a little additional proclamation for Mr. Lloyd. I'd like to read it this time. Whereas is with sincere appreciation that Steve Lloyd is recognized for his outstanding service to God and country through his leadership in the Boy Scouts of America, whereas for the last 22 years, Mr. Lloyd has served as an adult leader in scouting, including the last 14 years as Scout Master for Troop 97 at Trinity United Methodist Church in Homewood, Alabama, and whereas during his long tenure with Troop 97, Mr. Lloyd has played a vital role in offering hundreds of young Alabamians a rich and rewarding scouting experience, learning about the outdoors, developing good moral character, and cultivating a desire to serve, thereby helping to mold Alabama's future leaders into exceptional members of their communities, and whereas Mr. Lloyd has guided more than 110 Scouts to earn the highest achievement in scouting, the rank of Eagle, whereas even after their three sons had earned their Eagle Scout badges, Mr. Lloyd and his wife Marilyn continued to serve Troop 97 with their time, energy, and talents, and whereas Mr. Lloyd's actions as Scout Master have always exhibited the true definition of servant leadership and exemplified the Scout Law through his constant trustworthiness, loyalty, helpfulness, friendliness, courteousness, kindness, obedience, cheerfulness, thriftiness, bravery, cleanliness, and reverence, serving as a model and example for Scouts and adult leaders alike, and whereas after more than two decades of commitment to Alabama's youth and their development into upright, service-minded adults, Mr. Lloyd has decided the time is right to pass the Scout Master torch to a new generation, now therefore Kay Ivey, Governor of Alabama, do hereby commend Steve Lloyd on his service to the state of Alabama, wish him nothing but the best in his future endeavors, and it's signed by Governor Kay Ivey. And just one other small token, I have a flag that flew over the Alabama State Capitol, and so I have that and a certificate stating that it flew over the State Capitol, so an American flag that flew over the Alabama State Capitol.
And it doesn't need to be retired?
Uh, no, sir.
For all those that are here as Scouts down on the first floor in what's called the Empire or Patriot Room, there's going to be a reception with some cookies and tea.
All right, so with that, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Well, I didn't know if they wanted to stay for the pledge. Yeah, and I think, Mr. Harden, am I correct that someone's doing the invocation?
Yes.
I don't know who's in charge of the invocation, I'm sorry. Come on up to the microphone. If everyone will please stand and we'll follow this with the pledge.
You guys pray with me. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for tonight and for allowing us to be here at the City Council meeting. Father, we're grateful for these men and women who serve our city and serve our community and the rule of law that they bring. Thank you for letting us be here tonight to honor our former Scout Master and forever mentor, Steve Lloyd. Thank you for men like him who lead young men to be the leaders of tomorrow. In your Son's name we pray, amen.
Everyone face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. You're welcome to stay for the meeting, but I know everyone would probably prefer to go downstairs, and you're welcome to, you're welcome to leave for that too. All right. Okay, we'll actually get started on our meeting now. Ms. Salter, if you'll please call roll.
Yes, sir. Counselor Gualtney?
Here.
Counselor Gier?
Here.
Counselor Alamon? Counselor Wolverton?
Here.
Counselor Sims?
Here.
Counselor Jones?
Here.
Counselor Nelms?
Here.
Counselor Andrus?
Here.
Counselor Harden?
Here.
And President Wyatt?
Here.
Got a full house, everybody's here, you got a court.
All right. Next, we have the reading of the minutes from our council meeting of May 9, 2022. I would entertain a motion for, to dispense with the reading of those minutes and approval of the same.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Ms. Nelms, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero. Next, we have board vacancies. We did have a beautification board appointment that closed today. We're going to carry that over, give Ms. Salter a little bit more time to look, go through her emails to make sure, see what we got, so we'll deal with that in the next meeting. And then Ms. Smith, I think we need to open the Homewood Historic, Homewood Historic Board position?
Yes, the Ward 2 position currently occupied by Will Womack for Ward 2 needs to be opened up. Will is going to do a sabbatical in Japan. He was supposed to have done it two years ago.
Yeah.
So he's finally getting to go, so he felt like, I think he's going to be gone for six-ish months, and just felt like it would be better for him to go ahead and relinquish that seat, so hopefully when he comes back, he'll be able to join us again, but Ward 2 spot on the HHPC, and for the Ward 2 reps, really, 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 if y'all know of an attorney, we really need a lawyer, yeah, on the board, and that's the one, we had somebody in Heat West that rolled off or actually had to leave, so if y'all know of an attorney in Ward 2 that might be open to that, that would be a great, an add for the thing, but we encourage all applicants, but a lawyer would be fantastic. And then...
Before we do that, how long do you want to leave it open? The June 13th or the 27th?
What do y'all think?
Probably the 27th?
Okay, all right, yes.
So we'll do that one?
Right, yeah, 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 that's probably a good idea.
Let's do 4:30 on June 27th.
That sounds perfect.
Okay, so now you've got another one, correct?
Now, due to all the hullabaloo with Steve Lloyd, Mr. Lloyd has sold his house and is leaving Homewood, and he is currently serving on the Jefferson County Mental Health Authority Board. We have three representatives on that board. Donna Burgess is actually, her husband was here tonight, she is actually the, going to be the president of the board, and then we have another lady who has served faithfully for several years, but since Steve has moved out of Homewood, we need to open up his spot on the Jefferson County Mental Health Authority Board.
All right, and... Sorry, I'm doing too many things at once. Did you say that was at-large or was Ward specific? They're all at-large, right?
Yeah, that's not a city board, that's a Jefferson County board. We just have representatives from Homewood, so it does not matter where they live.
So same date and time work?
Yes, yes, let's do June 27th for that as well.
All right, so that'll be at 4:30 on the 27th. Okay, great. Next, we have two additions to the agenda tonight, both relate to committee referral. First one is a new item 290522, request for consideration for mile marker signage and statue for Lake Shore Trail. This is about the World Games. It's brought to us by Counselor Andrus and Berkeley Squires, and that will go to Special Issues. In addition, one item, the first item that is on the committee referral agenda, 180522, we have a new vehicle to add to that list, it would say 2016 Chevy Police Tahoe, that was wrecked, so that one will be added to that item. So with that, I would entertain a motion, a second for approval of the amended agenda. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gualtney, second by Ms. Andrus, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 11 to zero, which brings us to the consent agenda. We have nothing on that tonight, so we'll go straight to old business. 060522, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a front yard fence variance at 2827 16th Place South, brought to us by Chuck Van of Willow Homes and Wyatt Pugh, and we'll start with a report from Special Issues. Ms. Andrus is reporting that out tonight.
The committee met and voted 3 to 0 to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Sims and seconded by Counselor Alamon.
All right, thank you. So with that, I will open the public hearing on this matter. If you will, just tell us, tell us, go ahead and give us your name for the record.
Right, I'm Jason Hale, 1400 Sutherland Place. I'm here on, I'm the builder on behalf of, instead of Chuck Van. This is, it's listed as a front yard fence variance, but really it's a secondary front. What we are trying to do is put a fence along what is essentially the side of the house, with this being a corner lot. It has two fronts, and by rule, the secondary front, the fence can only be 15 feet from the road, but the setback for the house is nine. All we're trying to do is just match the house setback and tie it to the back of the house at nine feet from the road. You can see there, it looks quite a bit different now, but unfortunately this is a bad picture, but what we're trying to do is just tie it to the corner of the house, which appears like the side yard, but like I said, it's called the secondary front.
And this is over behind, like, Iron Tribe?
Yes, it's really close. You can see the Montessori School, actually.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Oh, these are the new houses being built right there on that drive.
Just down from Station 1.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I know where you're talking about, yep, okay.
All right. Is there anyone else here tonight to speak for or against this item? If not, then I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any comments or questions from council?
Since I wasn't in the committee, I just have the one question. So this is both a front yard fence variance, because like you said, it's on a corner lot, but also a setback variance, Wyatt, is that right?
Secondly, it's a second, it's a request for a setback variance of six feet.
Okay.
A setback of nine feet.
Instead of, okay, so secondary front yard and six feet less than what is currently required by 15 feet, right?
Yes, the fence is permitted as a secondary front yard.
Yeah. Okay, okay, it's just the setback. Okay, gotcha, thank you.
I would make a motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Gualtney, a second from Ms. Gier. Mr. Sims, did you have a question?
I just have a quick question. Could you confirm the height of the fence?
It's six feet.
Perfect, thanks.
All right, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 11 to zero and will be Resolution 2281. Thank you, Mr. Hale. All right, next item, 070522, public hearing set for tonight for consideration to allow rear yard fence in the right-of-way at 1509 Valley Place, brought to us by Jessica Starr and Wyatt Pugh, and we'll start again with a report from Special Issues, Ms. Andrus.
Mr. President Wyatt?
Yeah.
Do you mind if I interject real quickly here?
You're welcome to interject here.
I know that this from committee was sent out, I assume 3 to 0, because it sounds like there were three people there. We have no recommendation pending the public hearing tonight, but I was out of the country last week when this was in committee, and I had had a previous discussion with the homeowner, whose name is actually Jessica Kim Starr, it's her maiden name, and she had, and her husband, who are the petitioners here, had a previously scheduled family vacation for that same time period, and we're not going to be able to be at the committee meeting to present their information, so, and that we just had a miscommunication about how that needed to be handled, so I would like to request that this item be sent back to Special Issues so that the Starrs can, I mean, so that the Kims can come and present their information, and I know we have to open the public hearing, it's already been set, but I would love for that to be sent back to committee so that we can hear a presentation from them.
We do, and yes, I think that is what we're going to do. In addition, it's my understanding that the house that we were discussing in committee is not this applicant, is that...
It does appear to be the case. I was not at the committee meeting, so I can't, I was not a witness that firsthand, but apparently the house that was discussed in the committee meeting was the house next door.
And we do not have an application for anything from them.
We do not have anything from them. They are not on any agenda at this point.
All right, so then let me go ahead and open this public hearing. I will carry the public hearing over to our next meeting and send this item back to committee without objection, so that we can discuss, one, the correct house, and allow the Kims to be there to discuss it, so with, we'll deal with it in committee next Monday, and then it'll be back here at our first meeting in June. Okay, all right, thank you. Next item, 080522, public hearing set for...
It'll be two weeks, because next Monday's Memorial Day, it'll be June.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
It'll be 13.
It'll be the, committee on the 6th, and then, thank you, Ms. Salter, I appreciate that. Committee on the 6th, and then up here the following week on the 13th. All right.
Fifth and the 5th Monday, so we get off on Monday for Memorial Day.
All right, next item, 080522, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of sign variances at 2701 18th Street South, Suite 101, brought to us by Crawford Burton of Capstone and Rodney Scotts and Wyatt Pugh of our Building Department, and another report from Special Issues, Ms. Andrus.
The committee voted last week, 3 to 0, to refer this item back to the full council without recommendation pending the public hearing. The motion was made by Counselor Sims and seconded by Counselor Alamon.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so with that, I will open this public hearing, and if y'all will, just go ahead and give us your names and lay out what you're requesting here.
Yep, my name's Crawford Burton, 402 Office Park Drive, here representing the owner.
I'm Joshua Gentry, 320 East Glenwood. I'm the, I'm the end user.
So we have the next two items. I know last week y'all asked me to bring me, or bring out some pictures, so...
Yeah, and we will have to do them separately. No, no, you can still pass those out, but just so you know, we'll have to discuss them individually.
First one is for Rodney Scott BBQ. Right now, we currently only have signage facing the, to the west along 28th, and we are requesting a variance to have signage on the north side, which I believe is on 27th Avenue, and also adding a little sign on the back along Mamie Foster. The sign along the north is painted on the brick, eight foot six by six feet, and the sign along the back is also a logo painted onto the brick. It's about 11 feet by five foot six inches.
All right, so two new signs for Rodney Scott.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Mr. Pugh, my guess is we're going to need you here in a second. The actual variance requests are for Rodney Scott's?
Exactly. So it breaks down to two requests. The first one, the big square sign, it's a compliant, it's compliant in size for wall signs, but it's in a non-compliant location. So this is in, this is for a wall sign in a location other than a storefront, and that's this one. The hog logo on the back, that is a four-foot tall hog, so 24 inches being the maximum character or logo height, this would be a 24-inch character height variance.
So is there just a size variance for this one, or is there a location one as well?
And it would also be, yes, it would also be a sign in a location other than a storefront.
Got it, okay. All right, so just to recap and make sure I'm saying this right, the one on the side of the building is a location variance only, and the one on the back is both a location and a size variance?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Sir? It's okay. Go ahead.
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
I know we're not talking about the other variance right now, but should, should Little Donkey have a sign on the rear as well as Rodney Scott? Is that, is that going to be an issue with two signs on the same facade, or are they separate suites?
It's two separate suites, two tenants, so it's a separate...
But it's still the same variance request, is that correct?
Yeah, they're separate, they're separate, you treat them as separate items and separate entities, to answer your question, is the same kind of request that each of them are making individually?
I just want to make sure, if, for example, if the hog was approved, to make sure we didn't create something extra then for the...
No, I think you could look at it as though they're just two separate buildings, and just forget that they're attached.
All right, all right, is there anyone else here tonight to speak for or against this item? All right, then I'll close the public hearing and ask if there are any other questions or comments from council.
I have a, I have a quick question. So if you had to choose between the side or the back, do you have a preference?
No, I mean, what Crawford pointed to earlier is, you know, this essentially is a building with four storefronts or four, you know, primary roads, so is there a preference? No. I don't know how to settle that.
You wouldn't choose one, prefer one over the other?
You know, I think, I think in the end, a lot of this is that, if you, you know, it's really, sorry, it's really impressive if you look at this without any of this on the rear. Our guests are pretty confused coming from the rear, so I guess, you know, we would probably lean that way, but we hear the same thing from our guest, you know, coming from the north side, and really that's, you know, our angle on that was, that's Birmingham coming into our fair city, you know, so we want to, we want to be loud and proud, is all of those deserves.
And Josh, can I ask you a quick question? Because I wasn't here for the committee meeting, so I kind of missed out on the presentation. You're not putting a, there's not going to be a Little Donkey sign on the side of the other side, right? On the other side of the building?
So...
It's just on the back?
We got a lot of great advice from people who know, and yeah, we've removed a bunch of what we initially asked for, and no, we're not, to your point, we did have some stuff we wanted as an identifier on the alley side, and we decided to table that for this.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
No, I'll just make the comment that I think, you know, from the rear side makes all the sense.
Thank you.
I mean, I think, for me, where I see it, when you park, you want to be able to identify which restaurant is which, so I think that the rear side looks great and makes a lot of sense in terms of help people find your restaurants. I have, to be honest, a slightly harder sense in terms of coming from, I get the welcoming people from Birmingham, but that front sign is kind of hard to miss. I guess I drive that street, and so I would just be curious to hear what exactly are your customers saying in terms of difficulty in finding your location coming from Birmingham?
Say that a different, ask a different way, so coming from north...
Coming from north, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's a little confusion there. I mean, again, all we want to do is we want to be fluid, we're right at the new edge of Main Street, and so we want to keep everybody moving, and so that was why we kind of opted for the sign on the north side, it was some kind of, if, when you come down that hill, it's hard to tell what a lot of that is. If you think about, well...
With the new left turn lane right there to get into the development itself, a little more warning ahead of that turn lane would be nice to have traffic slowed down again.
Mr. Wolverton?
I definitely appreciate you guys coming back, and obviously there were, we can, I think, appreciate the fact that we saw a whole lot more last week in terms of what was initially being asked for, so I appreciate you scaling that back. I also agree, we didn't have those images at the back last week, that definitely helps kind of articulate why that might be needed back there. You know, just to be honest with you, the front side, I guess the, the north end of the building, so catching that southbound traffic off of 18th, to be honest with you, I'm just, you know, you have an image here and you have the paint as blue, just personally, it looks like it's going to be hard to register what that is, you know, so I, I don't know if that makes sense. Blue on that, on the background of the building, at least in the image that I'm looking at, maybe it's a little bit less so on, on that picture, but it doesn't pop, it doesn't, it doesn't make it easy to read for me, so, versus like a black paint, which is clear and clean, cut against that background, but I just didn't know if you, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, we absolutely played with gray and black, and we, A, this was a primary choice, you know, for branding, but then also when we did some imaging different times of the day, it was far more, it was far easier to see than the gray and black. But hey, sometimes you try stuff and it doesn't work.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Gualtney?
You know, I can see some of the reservation with the side sign, however, when I look at this from the Google Street View and just kind of get a perspective of, you know, the new median that's been put in place, the landscaping that we've added, I can, I can see the need for the variance here, just because once that landscaping grows up, and we do have a lot of trees there, it will provide a visual block for their sign because of the way the grade comes into the city, so I can, just wanted to share that thought as I see it being beneficial.
I would make a motion to approve the variances.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Smith and a second from Ms. Nelms. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to zero and will be Resolution 2282. All right, so y'all stay right there. Next item is 080522, public hearing set for tonight for consideration of a sign variance at 2701 18th Street South, Suite 101, again, brought to us by Crawford Burton and Wyatt Pugh, and we'll start with another report from Special Issues, Ms. Andrus. And we'll start with another report from Special Issues, Ms. Andrus.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Well, I think we, I think we took them together when we sent out a committee, I think we, no, did we not?
Probably not.
Okay. Well, then we met last week, and we voted 3 to 0 to send it back without regulation before the public hearing.
I think we did the same, I think y'all did the same thing, but, yeah, I think you did it twice.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm sure it was Counselor Sims, Counselor Allin. I'm kidding. It was the motion.
It would be hard for it to be anything else.
The motion was made by Counselor Sims and seconded by Counselor Allin.
I only missed the order, but I made a team.
Yeah, you got, you're right. I see that.
All right. All right. So with that, I will open the public hearing on this matter, and if y'all will, just give us a brief rundown of the sign requested for Little Donkey.
Right, this one is on the eastern front on Mamie Foster. It's hard to decipher which restaurant is which, and so we'd like to add about a, I believe it's 12-foot in diameter logo piece right there, and it's to paint it on to the brick. No material needed besides paint.
Okay. And Mr. Pugh, am I remembering correctly, this is just location?
No, sir, it is a location, but it's also a size. That donkey head is 108 inches tall, so that would be an 84-inch height variance.
Got it. Nothing with, what I'm remembering is, there's nothing with the wording, just the donkey head.
Correct, that's right.
All right. Okay. Anyone else here to speak for or against this item? And I'll close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Smith, second from Ms. Andrus. Any other questions or comments?
I would tell you, I had the opportunity to eat dinner there the other night. And what a change it is. I mean, what an incredible environment that's there, and the way, I'm sure that the restaurant spent some money, but, and the developer I know has spent some money, but it really looks crisp, it's clean, it's just very well done, very well done. I was very impressed with it.
You're the best, John.
Seriously. I mean, it just, it felt so nice on the inside of it.
Thank you.
And the food was fabulous.
All right. Anyone else? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 2283. Thank y'all very much.
Y'all great, thank you.
Okay. That brings us to 100522, request for a public hearing.
We actually do need to accept a resolution. Just accepting the petition doesn't mean you're going to accept the annexation.
Okay.
So can I revise it for 90 days?
Got it. So, just so everyone's clear, tonight, we're voting on a resolution, that resolution will set the public hearing.
Do we need to move to the 12th?
That we're going to move to September 12th.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So, but we'll get a report from Planning and Development first, Ms. Andrus.
Yes. Hold on, I'm sorry. Okay. The committee met last week, we actually voted 5 to 0, because it were five of us to recommend restarting the public hearing for September 12th, 2022. The motion was made by Counselor Walton and seconded by Counselor Nels.
All right. All right. So we have a motion from Planning and Development. Any questions or comments?
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
When we brought this in, and the folks came up and presented us to bring it in, it was too lots, correct?
This is the other one?
This is another annexation.
This is the half of mine. Mr. Kinsley came to talk.
This was just because it's word of a police jurisdiction, you have to advertise it, as opposed to not advertising it if it doesn't.
Mr. Wolverton?
So, we did have a discussion about zoning with the annexation, whether or not that was going to be predetermined or not. I didn't know where we kind of left that, or how, where that would get resolved.
Yeah, this is just to set the public hearing.
So potentially, that would be at the public.
At the public hearing, that proffer could be made.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 2284. All right, next item, 120522, request to release lien on the following property, 1117 Hardwick Lane. We're going to carry this item over one more time. I think we've worked everything out, but we haven't received the check yet, so we're going to wait till we receive the check. All right. Next item, 0104.
We're carrying number 12, is that what you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Next item, 010422, request to contract with Ms. Sims Garden Foundation, Inc., to manage Sims Garden, brought to us by Amy Mylum and J.J. Bischoff. And we'll start with a report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met May 16th, and on this item voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval.
All right. So we have a motion from Finance. Any other questions or comments? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 11 to 0, and will be Resolution 2285. All right. Next item, 150522, request for tax abatements for the property at 740 Shades Creek Parkway, brought to us by Trey Hill and David Silverstein. And another report from Finance, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met, we heard from Trey Hill, David Silverstein, we recommended 3 to 1 approval of the item. It was made by Counselor Harden, seconded by Counselor Walton. So 3 to 1 coming out of Finance.
All right. Mr. Kendrick, I meant to ask you this beforehand, this is an ordinance.
I'm sorry, I'm doing too many things.
I'm sorry, for the tax abatement?
Resolution.
Just a resolution?
It's a resolution, yeah.
All right. All right. So, we have a motion from Finance. Any questions or comments from the council?
I wasn't here, so I'm just curious, what are the, what is the amount of the tax payments?
Sure. Trey, do you want to go over it?
Yeah, I'm happy to. So I'm Trey Hill, Economic Development Attorney with Bradley, 18, 19, Fifth Avenue North. It's good to be back before you guys. So, we went over a tax benefit analysis that the Birmingham Business Alliance, I had put together at the Finance Committee meeting last Monday, which, to answer your specific question, Counselor Smith, the sales tax abatement that we're asking the City of Homewood to consider abating on construction materials and FFNE is $107,000. The property tax abatement for a five-year property tax abatement period on the real property and the FFNE within the building is approximately $276,000. When you compare that to the roughly $1,150,000 net benefit that the City of Homewood stands to gain in the form of sales tax, real property tax, business license tax, and other revenue, it's a significant multiplier.
And I wasn't here last week either, and the final figure you read, was that over the same period, or what, over the lifetime, or?
So, the final figure I read was over a five-year abatement period. So, it would commence on the first October 1st, which is the property tax lien date under Alabama law, after the project is placed in service and run for five years thereafter. The first number I read, the sales tax figure, that's during the construction period itself.
I was talking about the final, the benefit to the.
Oh, I'm sorry. 20 years. Thank you.
I would like to comment, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Sims. That, for the benefit of the folks that were not here, that Mayor Woodfin has signed off on this, that it does not violate the Good Neighbor pledge, so I didn't want to.
Correct. There's no poaching issue.
No poaching issue. And one fact that I'd also like to bring up that I should have in talking about the impact, so the impact that I mentioned, the $1,050,000, $150,000 over 20 years, is for the City of Homewood general fund. Of course, by statute, the taxes going to the schools cannot be abated, and so that's an additional, almost $1.1 million over that same period that's going to fund the schools.
Mr. Sims?
Yes, I just wanted to comment that, you know, greatly appreciate y'all for coming and presenting on this, it's a great project. What I'm struggling with really, honestly, is the fact that, you know, similar to construction costs increasing right now, our costs as a city are also increasing when we do road projects that are bid and then come back a little, or our budget's set and they come back bid a little bit higher, and then we have to amend the budget. We also have things to look forward to in the coming year, so we're really trying to constantly, you know, balance all of those in consideration. We also have other redevelopment that's upcoming, where, you know, the concern is, once we start, you know, an abatement here and abatement here for taxes, you know, where do we draw the line? And that, so my question to you is, what do you think makes this different that warrants other economic development projects to merit tax abatement?
Yes, so I appreciate the question. One item that really makes this project unique is that it's on property that has been exempt, it's on church property, so there's been no tax revenue coming towards the city, and quite frankly, if the project doesn't move forward, there is no benefit to the city for the revenue that it would otherwise receive if this project is allowed to go forward. The other points, there's bringing two new corporate citizens into the city, the Welch Group and First Bank, both located in Birmingham. Again, Jennifer mentioned that Woodfin has signed the acknowledgement indicating it doesn't violate a Good Neighbor pledge. So that's, how many jobs you got there? I think it's roughly 89 jobs coming into the city, with an additional forecast for future jobs.
And one thing, I was mentioning earlier, too, I'm just trying to think this through in consideration, if, for tenants coming from the City of Birmingham to City of Homewood, if I'm not mistaken, there's actually an occupational tax in the City of Birmingham that they won't have to pay here. So that is a benefit for the tenants, for sure. I think the property tax abatement for five years is a tough ask in the current climate, as we do have to project forward in building our revenues, and so I just wanted to be fair and explain that to y'all. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'll just add, I mean, I share similar questions in terms of the project. I mean, I think that the material cost request is reasonable, but I'm struggling, me personally, with the five-year property tax, just because of the challenges that we're going to face the city as well, and so that's where I'm at.
Well, let me make one point, too. So we originally requested a 10-year property tax abatement request, which is sort of viewed as kind of the standard abatement request around town, and so, you know, as good stewards of taxpayer dollars as the City Council more than any other is, it came back with a recommendation to ask for five. So I do want to just recognize at the outset that we have made some concession to get to where we are right now. This environment is unique. It's unique for a city, just like it is for a developer. I mean, this development started before COVID. I mean, it's been almost three years, and without even changing the scope of the project, how much have those construction costs gone up?
We've been through multiple pricing exercises with our contractor, and again, I know some of you have heard this, but from August of 2020 to February of '22, our hard cost number went up over $51 a square foot, without changing anything.
How much is that total dollars?
Maybe 25,000 feet.
30,000 feet. So one and a half million dollars.
Sure.
Yep. You know, coupled with the financing costs.
Well, yeah, we're about to face another interest rate hike in June, that we're, I mean, quite frankly, without some of the abatements, this project may not be able to move forward. It just doesn't make sense, it might not pencil from an investment standpoint, and you just have to, it just might not make economic sense to develop a project that has no returns, and things continue to get more and more expensive, and.
Can you reiterate the fact that this is church property as it stands, and it's exempt from property tax?
Zero dollars.
Zero dollars coming in. There's no benefit coming.
And that's, that to me is the most unique aspect of this project, is there's no baseline tax revenue that the city is currently generating. So without the project, it's zero dollars.
We're not losing anything.
Not losing anything.
We're not getting anything for it.
That's correct.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah, and that was really all part of our discussion. I mean, Mr. Sims, I agree with you, I don't want to give up any revenue, you know how I am about revenue. I don't want to give up any, but in terms of the fact that the Board of Education, they're going to be getting, you know, their.
1.1 million.
1.1 million, and then we'll get the 1.15 over 20 years. I mean, we did look at 10, but I felt like, you know, we were negotiating in good faith and came down to the five that we both could live with. I don't know that they can even, they can go any lower than that. So those were my thoughts, mainly the fact that it is on church property, it's not really doing anything, it's an exciting project. I know your tenants are going to be paying some of the highest rates of any property in the city, so I'm excited about the project and want to help you, you know, in any way we can to get, as a partnership, so.
Thank you.
And as far as the church goes, I want to add that this is helping the church, this is helping the church stay in its property. This is for its own viability, so I would add that aspect to it.
And I would tell you that we had others who have approached us for other projects, who approached me personally about, more than once, about coming in just for sales tax abatement, and we didn't deal with them because this is unique, and that you're not getting any taxes now, and once you do this, we'll get taxes that we aren't getting today. So, I want to make that, state that also, that that's a huge part of this. If that wasn't the case, I'm not so sure we would be talking to you.
Thanks. Mr. Sims?
I just wanted to say, too, I mean, I appreciate the discussion, I do, because, I mean, these are, these are the tough decisions when we're talking about our financial future, so I appreciate everybody for chiming in. And I just wanted to see, you know, is there a consideration to, you know, given that the tenant will be not paying, you know, at least the employees not paying occupational taxes and other taxes, there are incentives. Counselor Wolverton also referenced that some of those can be passed on to the tenants through the lease, as far as the cost of property tax. I mean, would a, would a, you know, a three-year abatement or a two-year abatement mean anything equally to you, or is, after those discussions, is five years really where you're at as far as your break-even line?
Yeah, and I want to speak.
For the project.
For my client, the developer, but, you know, the occupational tax is, will be a benefit for the tenants, and, you know, this is the developer, you know, trying to deal with this crazy environment, with construction costs as high as they are, you know, with a 40-year high on inflation, with financing costs as high as they are. So, we now recognize that that could be a benefit to the tenants, but, you know, the incentive here is primarily for the developer, trying to pencil this out to make sure that development can go forward.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I'll just say this, and I think Mr. Harden said it well, there's a distinction with this property, and others said it as well, a distinction with this property that it's currently not, not being taxed, and this would provide, even over the five-year abatement, would provide a significant amount of money to the schools, that does distinguish this from other projects, and I agree with what Mr. Harden said, that, but for that, we're probably not having this discussion right now, and that's important for every, I want the public to understand that, and I want future people that come to us to understand that distinction, that that's, that is something that's clearly, as everyone's heard, important to a number of counselors, because I think Mr. Sims is right, we have to be careful about these abatements, and how many we approve, and when they should be approved and when they shouldn't, each one has to be viewed on its own, with its own distinctive characteristics, but we do have to be careful with them, and, so anyway, I think that distinction's been made, and it's important, so.
Any other questions or comments? Not? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Two noes? Okay. So that is, was that two noes or three noes?
It was two.
Two noes.
I wasn't here.
Who were the noes?
Okay. So there, that is nine to two, and will be Resolution 2286.
It's all mine and Sam's or none?
Sims and Gear.
Gear, Sims and Gear. Okay.
All right. Thank you. Thank y'all very much. All right. Next item, 270322, request for consideration to add wayfinding signage in the northern section of downtown. Brought to us by myself and Councilors Andrus, Gier, Gualtney, and Sims. And we'll start with a report from Public Safety, Mr. Gualtney.
Yes, the committee met on Monday last week and voted five to zero to recommend this help to council. So we included a cap of up to five thousand dollars.
Okay. All right. So that is...
Four thousand.
Was it four thousand? I'm sorry.
Four thousand.
I didn't have my note in front of me.
Sorry about that.
Correction, four thousand. That's what I heard you say, four, right? All right. So we have a motion from Public Safety. Any questions or comments? Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I just made the comment in committee that there was no reason to send this to finance. I would support that we move ahead with it without sending it to committee.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question, and I wasn't here last week.
Yeah, Ms. Gier.
So a question to add wayfinding. So did we decide on the, on three signs?
Counselor Gualtney and I met with Cale earlier this afternoon, and we're working on, we've got a location coming down the, from Birmingham that's going to be on the right. That gives you plenty of time if you're in the right lane to get over to the left. We're going to send you around, and then we're going to put two poles, two attached to the poles, one on the corner of Nineteenth.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other is going to be coming in from Red Mountain Expressway. Again, plenty of space. We found a pole, Cale pulled up on Google Maps, and so we'll have that sign there. Again, plenty of time to give you a chance to get over into the left turn lane. We picked out kind of a design factor, and we're working on sort of wording right now as far as, you know, the idea is to take people off of that intersection of Twenty-eighth and Central if they're not going downtown. And so we looked at a lot of examples, and some of the stuff that we talked about were, you know, downtown district, downtown shopping district, you know, sitting hall, public parking, you know, sort of different ways to denote if you're not traveling specifically to go downtown. You don't want to get involved in that. You want to go around and go US 31 southbound. So we haven't finalized that, and so Cale's working on that, and he's going to present it before we vote on it, but that's where we are with that.
Okay, good. Because that, the third sign that's most to the east, if we could look back at the map that was just up there, the one that's on the Rosedale, the east Rosedale side of that intersection that leads to the bank and into the, into the east neighborhood.
Yeah.
There are already a couple of signs on a post there. And I wondered about, were we going to add something to that post? Are we going to put a whole new sign up? But it sounds like all that's being considered.
Yeah, we came off of that because once you're there, you can't get over to, we're trying to, again, we're trying to stop you from going into Twenty-eighth and Central if you don't have to. So if you're...
But that's, that's the location of those signs that were just up there. Is that location right there?
Yeah, that's...
The same location? That's the same location that we're considering the third sign?
No, it's going to be further to the...
Back toward the east.
Interstate.
Yeah, back toward the thirty-one to eight.
Yeah. Like coming down Red Mountain, like coming back down Red Mountain Expressway, like...
Okay, so just a whole nother sign. I guess...
May have heard the truth.
There's another pole, though. We're not putting another sign up.
Okay.
And it's going to look like our downtown branding. It's going to look clean and just like our other downtown branding. It's going to have the lampposts and everything.
The main thing is just looking at other signage in the area. And I would say if there's an opportunity to get rid of signs, like those pole signs that say Muslim Center and Lee Center, I don't know if we would, could incorporate anything.
Oh, put it all on one sign?
Yeah. I don't know that, but just, there are a lot of signs, you know, and we talk about new signs a lot, so just consider that perhaps.
That's a great idea, Cale. You got that? That's a great idea. Yeah, thank you. That's perfect.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That is eleven to zero and will be Resolution 2287. All right, next item, 020522, request for permission to work in the right-of-way to remove trees adjacent to 1703 Shades Park Drive, brought to us by William Siegel of Twin Construction and Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with a report from Public Works, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, so the committee met and voted four to zero to recommend approval pending the proper indemnification agreement. The motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by Counselor Sims.
All right. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eleven to zero and will be Resolution 2288. All right, next item, 030522, request to work in the right-of-way to tap storm infrastructure from 305 Morris Boulevard in City Storm, Cities Storm Inlet, brought to us by Willow Holmes and Cale Smith. And another report from Public Works, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, the committee met and voted four to zero to recommend approval pending the proper indemnification agreement. Motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by Counselor Nelms.
All right. So we have a motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments? Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I just made the comment in committee that there was no reason to send this to finance. I would support that we move ahead with it without sending it to committee.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
I have a question, and I wasn't here last week.
Yeah, Ms. Gier.
So a question to add wayfinding. So did we decide on the, on three signs?
Counselor Gualtney and I met with Cale earlier this afternoon, and we're working on, we've got a location coming down the, from Birmingham that's going to be on the right. That gives you plenty of time if you're in the right lane to get over to the left. We're going to send you around, and then we're going to put two poles, two attached to the poles, one on the corner of Nineteenth.
Mm-hmm.
And then the other is going to be coming in from Red Mountain Expressway. Again, plenty of space. We found a pole, Cale pulled up on Google Maps, and so we'll have that sign there. Again, plenty of time to give you a chance to get over into the left turn lane. We picked out kind of a design factor, and we're working on sort of wording right now as far as, you know, the idea is to take people off of that intersection of Twenty-eighth and Central if they're not going downtown. And so we looked at a lot of examples, and some of the stuff that we talked about were, you know, downtown district, downtown shopping district, you know, sitting hall, public parking, you know, sort of different ways to denote if you're not traveling specifically to go downtown. You don't want to get involved in that. You want to go around and go US 31 southbound. So we haven't finalized that, and so Cale's working on that, and he's going to present it before we vote on it, but that's where we are with that.
Okay, good. Because that, the third sign that's most to the east, if we could look back at the map that was just up there, the one that's on the Rosedale, the east Rosedale side of that intersection that leads to the bank and into the, into the east neighborhood.
Yeah.
There are already a couple of signs on a post there. And I wondered about, were we going to add something to that post? Are we going to put a whole new sign up? But it sounds like all that's being considered.
Yeah, we came off of that because once you're there, you can't get over to, we're trying to, again, we're trying to stop you from going into Twenty-eighth and Central if you don't have to. So if you're...
But that's, that's the location of those signs that were just up there. Is that location right there?
Yeah, that's...
The same location? That's the same location that we're considering the third sign?
No, it's going to be further to the...
Back toward the east.
Interstate.
Yeah, back toward the thirty-one to eight.
Yeah, like coming down Red Mountain, like coming back down Red Mountain Expressway, like...
Okay, so just a whole nother sign. I guess...
May have heard the truth.
There's another pole, though. We're not putting another sign up.
Okay.
And it's going to look like our downtown branding. It's going to look clean and just like our other downtown branding. It's going to have the lampposts and everything.
The main thing is just looking at other signage in the area. And I would say if there's an opportunity to get rid of signs, like those pole signs that say Muslim Center and Lee Center, I don't know if we would, could incorporate anything.
Oh, put it all on one sign?
Yeah. I don't know that, but just, there are a lot of signs, you know, and we talk about new signs a lot, so just consider that perhaps.
That's a great idea, Cale. You got that? That's a great idea. Yeah, thank you. That's perfect.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That is eleven to zero and will be Resolution 2287. All right, next item, 020522, request for permission to work in the right-of-way to remove trees adjacent to 1703 Shades Park Drive, brought to us by William Siegel of Twin Construction and Wyatt Pugh. And we'll start with a report from Public Works, Mr. Wolverton.
Yes, so the committee met and voted four to zero to recommend approval pending the proper indemnification agreement. The motion was made by Counselor Harden and seconded by Counselor Sims.
All right. So we have another motion from Public Works. Any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is eleven to zero. All right, 270522, request for emergency storm, storm drain repair for Berry Road, brought to us by Berkeley Squires. This is an item where we've got, obviously, as it indicates, an emergency that needs to be done. The resolution does include a budget amendment where we're using some ARPA money to get this done because it can't wait, obviously. So with that, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wolverton, second by Ms. Gier. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is eleven to zero. All right, which brings us to our last item, 280522, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of May 10, 2022 through May 23, 2022, brought to us by Robert Brigette and Melody Salter. Mr. Jones, is this still Ms. Smith?
It is. It is.
I... He all told Jean 30. Oh, my gosh, is that really? Definitely, that's going by really fast. I looked at the vouchers, had some questions. Ms. Salter and Mr. Brigette answered them for me, and I would make a motion to approve the vouchers through May 23rd.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also eleven to zero and will be Resolution 2291. Which brings us to our last item, 280522, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of May 10, 2022 through May 23, 2022, brought to us by Robert Brigette and Melody Salter. Mr. Jones, is this still Ms. Smith?
It is. It is.
I... He all told Jean 30. Oh, my gosh, is that really? Definitely, that's going by really fast. I looked at the vouchers, had some questions. Ms. Salter and Mr. Brigette answered them for me, and I would make a motion to approve the vouchers through May 23rd.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also eleven to zero. All right, 270522, request for emergency storm, storm drain repair for Berry Road, brought to us by Berkeley Squires. This is an item where we've got, obviously, as it indicates, an emergency that needs to be done. The resolution does include a budget amendment where we're using some ARPA money to get this done because it can't wait, obviously. So with that, I would entertain a motion and a second for approval.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wolverton, second by Ms. Gier. Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is eleven to zero and will be Resolution 2291. Which brings us to our last item, 280522, request for consideration of approval of vouchers for the period of May 10, 2022 through May 23, 2022, brought to us by Robert Brigette and Melody Salter. Mr. Jones, is this still Ms. Smith?
It is. It is.
I... He all told Jean 30. Oh, my gosh, is that really? Definitely, that's going by really fast. I looked at the vouchers, had some questions. Ms. Salter and Mr. Brigette answered them for me, and I would make a motion to approve the vouchers through May 23rd.
All right, we have a motion from Ms. Smith. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That is also eleven to zero and will be Resolution 2292. All right, so that brings us to the end of the agenda tonight. Mr. Mayor?
Just a few comments. Excuse me, just a few comments tonight.
One, I know he is, excuse me, allergies are killing me. Wyatt has left the room, but we will recognize him at another point, at another council meeting, a little bit more professionally, but he was awarded the Code Official of the Year by the Alabama Code. Let me make sure I get this, Code Officials Association of Alabama, so congratulations to Wyatt. But again, we will have something for him at a, at a later meeting. And then to give you some exciting news, I had a meeting this afternoon with some representatives from the World Games. We, on June 6th, which is the day before the opening ceremonies on June, excuse me, July, July 6th, the day before the opening ceremonies on July 7th, there will be a flag walk that will actually, it's going to start in DC, and by the time it hits Mobile, it should be on July the 5th. And then it will make its way up through Hoover, Vestavia, Homewood, and then down to City Hall in Birmingham. So there will be a lot of, a lot of things that are going to be going on in the city during that day and leading up to it as far as police and fire, everything else, but it's going to be really, really exciting to see that flag being handed off at each municipality before it gets down to, to downtown Birmingham before the beginning of the World Games the next day. So there'll be a lot, a lot of work that will be planned going forward, probably for the next month, as far as coordinating this, but we want to make sure that all of our residents and all of our businesses know so that they can help line the streets on the 6th when the flag comes through, because we're going to have to shut down quite a bit for, for that flag to make its way through, through Homewood, coming up from Vestavia, and then, of course, going over the hill by Vulcan all the way down to Birmingham City Hall. So it should be a really exciting event. I will give you guys some more updates as we get through this, but there will be several meetings to come, so I'll update you, but...
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Gualtney?
No comments this evening. I will set Public Safety after Finance.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Gier?
I don't have any announcements, but I do look forward to the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission Forum tomorrow night at Union Missionary, and I'll let Counselor Smith talk more about that, but I look forward to attending. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alamon?
Yeah, I'll just say that I'm grateful for the community that my family lives in. You know, we had pools open up this past weekend. We also have Patriot Park Street Fest starting on June 4th, or having, being held on June 4th. But on a more serious note, I also want to talk about human trafficking. And, you know, the mayor and I are meeting with some folks in Birmingham tomorrow to discuss how we can tackle this issue in our community. And I don't typically talk about my work, but he goes recognized by the Department of You know, we had pools open up this past weekend. We also have Patriot Park Street Fest starting on June 4, or having, being held on June 4. But on a more serious note, I also want to talk about human trafficking. And, you know, the mayor and I are meeting with some folks in Birmingham tomorrow to discuss how we can tackle this issue in our community, and I don't typically talk about my work, but he goes recognized by the Department of Homeland Security with a Service to the Homeland Award for our work in human trafficking and working with victims of human trafficking. I think this is, issue is close to my heart, and I'm really proud of the mayor and the chief and other folks for the efforts that we're trying to make in our community to make it safer. So, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Ross and everyone else. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank you for the work you're doing on it, and congratulations on that recognition. That's wonderful for Hecan. Mr. Wolverton?
Yeah, so, on a summer note as well, I'm sure if anybody watched the news, local news in the last 24 hours, there was kind of a murder-suicide that took place in St. Clair County. The wife actually worked for our sister agency, and their office is off of Lakeshore. So, if you could just be a prayer for that family, obviously, just unbelievable situation, and I know a lot of people are struggling to kind of wrap their minds around it, and so, just be with their family and loved ones during this time. Also, I did want to just recognize Parks and Rec and just let them know how much, you know, we appreciate, obviously, all the programs and things that they run. More specifically, my kids have had a great experience with soccer. And just wrapped up, this weekend, they had, they each had a game Saturday and Sunday, and wanted to kind of segue that into congratulating the girls' soccer team on winning state after getting very close the last couple of years and finally making it across that threshold, as well as congratulating all the new grads that are in and around the city, and I don't know, nobody on council has one this year, but it seems like every other year there has been, yeah.
John and I've got one next year.
Yeah, yeah. So, with that, I'll set Public Works, actually, yeah, yeah, set Public Works for after Public Safety.
And it's on the 6/6, that makes my makeup.
Correct, yes. I won't be here next week.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Sims?
I don't have a new grad, but I did attend kindergarten preview day, and I have one starting kindergarten next year, so...
You're not too far from me, Alex.
So, I mean, so, yeah, just want to roll that into, as you were saying, Counselor Wolverton, congratulations to all the graduates, congratulations to the girls' high school soccer team as well. They're also ranked number one in the nation by Max Preps, which is just amazing, so they had a great season, and kudos to them for all the hard work they put in. Also, just, once again, you know, we can't say it enough, thank you so much to our teachers, staff, and everyone at the district for, you know, another great, successful school year in Homewood, and hope everybody enjoys the summer, stay safe, and have a great Memorial Day. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, I wanted to thank Ms. Salter and her staff for the great "We Love Homewood" parade float. That was great, and we, I think we won, but I don't know that we get anything.
Yeah, you did, you did. They're working on your award. I did get a email from Rusty Holly, so we will present your award at a later date.
Oh, good, okay. But anyway, it was a lot of fun, and just kind of, just being there in Edgewood, I just thought back to how the city has evolved, and it's just unbelievable how many families that we had out there, and, you know, it just, it's wonderful to see, and I just am excited about the future of Homewood since I've been around so long.
I did call Debbie Fout when we got home that night, though, to tell them that it took her retiring for us, because she was my main competition with your floats.
Okay. And then, I wanted to thank the mayor. I'm always going to smile when I'm driving down Highway 31 and I actually see the city putting up the flags up on the median, and I always think about what we did before, and that was beautiful, happy to see that. And then, I was happy to represent Homewood at the Alabama League of Municipalities. I met a ton of people and got a lot of ideas. Orange Beach also has a city manager there. They said our whole council could come down there for a field trip and...
[laughing]
Yeah, it was real, it was actually funny, because there was...
Does that mean we get to stay at Jerry and his cousin's house, Jerry Johnson's house? They'll let us stay there while we're down there?
Yes, and I was in line with, they had the city manager, the finance director, and the city clerk, and I looked at all three of them, and I said, "Who runs the city?" And they all looked at the city clerk. You know, in typical fashion, but anyway, it was, that was great. And then, also, just want to, also, I'm so happy we acknowledged Steve Lloyd. I mean, I'm an assistant scout master, and it takes tremendous amount of work, but for what he did for 22 years, when his children were six years removed from scouting, is phenomenal to me. So, I appreciate him, and then Finance will be at five.
Thank you very much. Ms. Smith?
I'm just going to apologize beforehand, because I have a lot of stuff. So, the first thing, and Ms. Gere mentioned that, is that the Homewood Historic Preservation Commission is hosting a forum, an educational forum, tomorrow night at Union Missionary Baptist Church in Rosedale. It is located behind Robiemans, and it is at 6:00 PM. And the Historic Preservation Commission is going to do an educational forum about the historic structures report that they completed for the church, and then there's going to be some history of the church provided by Reverend Steele and some members of the church, and then there is going to be a reception following with food and drinks and just fellowship. So, and that will be in the fellowship hall, so that is tomorrow at 6:00 PM. And yesterday, Amy is gone, but I had the fun time of running on the first garden gallop for the Ms. Sims Garden. She has put a lot of effort into creating interesting ways to support the garden, and I told her I think this is something that she can build on for next year. There were not a lot of people who ran. It was just a mile, so it was no big deal. There were a lot of cute kiddos running in superhero costumes, but I think she could grow that into something more substantial for the garden, so I appreciated her work on that. And she's also, they're hosting on June 18 in the gardens, and I'll mention this again in the future, they're hosting a kids' market. They did this last year where kids had all these wares that they sold in the garden. They're going to do that again on June 18, so that should be fun. And then, so, the Homewood Environmental Commission was out at We Love Homewood Day, and I was out there with the historic commission, and they have these really cool stickers now that you can put on your recycling bin. I do a lot of fuming that people do their recycling wrong. It really makes me mad. It's just a pet peeve, so I may start slapping these on people's recycling...
Passive aggressive helping, yes.
But, because you don't put your recycling in plastic bags. For anybody who doesn't know that, you do not put your recycling in plastic bags.
You definitely use greasy, saturated, [inaudible].
Nope, they are not. They are not allowed. So, anyway, they have these really cool stickers, and they have a ton of them, so if you want to be passive aggressive like me, get you a stack, start slapping them on people's recycling bins, because, you know, it's a thing. And also, congratulations to the girls' team. Of course, I was a little heartbroken that the boys did not make it this year, but the girls, I was so proud of them because they had a heartbreaking loss last year, and Sean McBride became the first coach in Homewood history, I'm not sure about anybody in other places, but to coach both the women's and the men's teams to state championships. So, exciting for Sean, he's a great guy. He coached Hardy when he was a sophomore, and I'm just so proud of those girls, so happy for them. And I'll set special issues for after Public Works.
All right, thank you. Ms. Nels?
I don't have any more to do, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Andrus?
I need to set PND, so we'll do that after special issues, and just, you know, want to say congratulations to Mr. Pugh, that's a gigantic honor, I'm just super, super excited for him, he deserves it. And congratulations to the class of 2022. Birmingham Southern is looking forward to Christian Thompson continuing his basketball athletic career as a Panther, so we're excited about that, but that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Harden?
I want to thank JJ and the mayor for that proclamation and all the work that that took, and I had two kids get through that scout program and ended up Eagle Scouts, and I really doubt they would have done that without the leadership of Steve Lloyd, and so, we're very glad, and I had no idea if anybody'd show up. We got about seven, we got seventy-two...
I think you achieved two, getting people to show up.
Seventy-two cookies, and I'm thinking, that wasn't enough, you know? You know, but JJ helped us get the room, and it really worked out well, and it's hard to know that that troop and what it's really done to get all those kids through to become Eagle, which is not easy to do. So, I appreciate all the help and the mayor's proclamation.
All right, thank you very much. I'm just going to echo what some others said about congratulating the girls' soccer team, but in particular, I would want to congratulate Sean McBride. For those of you that haven't had a kid at the high school, you don't, probably don't recognize him, but he is amazing. I had two kids that I couldn't pay to get on the soccer field, much to my dismay, their entire lives. He made such a big difference in both of their lives just by being their history teacher. He is just remarkable.